Order of the Pen County Planning Commission. Roll call, all our commissioners are present except Laurie Lutson. And today we have two brand-new planning commission members, Rich Marsh and Travis Lassiter.
Lassiter, yep.
Anyway, we welcome them on board. Deb is representing the County Board of Commissioners today. And with this being the first meeting in July by our bylaws, we elect new officers with the new members coming on board. And with that, I'll turn it over to PJ, the Planning Director, for election of officers.
Yep, we also have three positions open today. The first is the chairperson. Then, after the chairperson is elected, then there'll be elections held for first vice-chair and second vice-chair, which will be conducted by the newly-elected chairperson. So it'll open the floor up for nominations for chair to the board?
I'll nominate Sig.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? If I remember, I'm supposed to ask three times. Any other nominations?
And somebody has to second that.
Actually, the Roberts Rules and Orders don't require a second on our nomination.
Okay.
Sig, your chair.
No, we gotta vote.
So with no other further nominations, anybody like to close nominations for chair?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, if all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, nominations are closed for chair. So Sig, I guess by acclamation, you're gonna be our chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your absence now. We'll proceed with first vice-chair, nominations for first vice-chair and nominations.
I'll nominate Laurie Lutson.
Any other nominations? Nominations for vice-chair. Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for nominations to cease for first vice-chair.
I'll make a motion, move.
Second? On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Make a motion then that we accept Laurie as the first vice-chair by unanimous decision since no others recommended. Second vice-chair.
I would nominate Barb.
Any other nominations for second vice-chair? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for nominations to cease. A unanimous ballot, we cast for Barb.
I make the motion.
Second? I have a second.
Jill, did you second it?
Oh, sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, Barb is our second vice-chair, Laurie is our first vice-chair. With that, we'll proceed on with the approval of the minutes from the June 27th meeting. Any corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for approval of the minutes as presented. I have a second.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Today's agenda has 21 items. And we'll address the consent calendar after we have approval of the agenda. Any additions or removal of the agenda, or changes of sequence of the agenda? Now, to entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Consent calendar, the following items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be taken by all items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commission or recommendations of the County Board of Commissioners will make the final decision. I guess that's our standard language in there. I would note that on conditional use permits, unless they are appealed to the board, the decisions here are final and conditional use permits unless appealed to the County Board. Any, I'll start with staff. Any items you'd like removed from the consent calendar? Consent calendar being items four through 12 today.
No, sir.
Any planning commissioners that wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public? Well, yeah, sorry. PJ, if you'd then read for the public the items four through 12 of the proposed consent calendar.
Sure, PJ, kind of a director of planning department. Item number four in the consent calendar is conditional use permit review 1029 for Dan and Beth Thomas to review a temporary residence, a camper, on a property while constructing a single-family residence. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1029 with the applicant's concurrence. Item number five, conditional use permit review 1301 for Loretta Deagle, Lazy Rocking D LLC. Rushmore Vacation Rentals is a local contact. It's to review a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1301 with seven conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1311 for Sugar Daddy's Kerry Johnston is the applicant to review an RV site on the subject property to be utilized on a part-time basis on weekends in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1311 with six conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1422 for Gaslight Restaurant is to review an illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1422 with six conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1513 for Richard and Dolores Lindstrom. Rod Lindstrom is the agent to review a ranch-handled residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1513 with nine conditions. Number nine is conditional use permit review 1611, the Gathering of Eagles. Christopher Lord is the agent to review a temporary assembly of people for a five-day spiritual gathering in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1611 to the July 25th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting in order for staff to conduct a site visit. Item 10, conditional use permit 1619 for Jeff Rotledge to allow for a woodworking business as a home occupation in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the withdrawal of conditional use permit 1619 per the applicant's request. Item 11, mining permit review 1601 for Western Construction. Tom Lean is the applicant to review a mining permit to excavate, extract, and process gravel. Staff recommends approval of the extension of mining permit 1601 with 18 conditions. Item 12 is road name, Towering Pines Lane Mills Family Limited Partnership to name a 33-foot wide easement, providing access to properties located within Section 29 and 32. Staff recommends approval of road name, of the road name Towering Pines Lane.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull any of those items that were just read for the record? Items four through 12 on the agenda. Hearing none, entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar of items four through 12.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Move on to the regular agenda, item 13.
Good morning, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 13 is a special consideration to the Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development, PU 1604. This is a special consideration to PUD 7902 to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to eight feet to allow for construction of a shed and greenhouse. The applicant is Mark Herrick, he is here in the audience today. As this property exists today, it is zoned planned unit development. It is 0.2 acres. Access to this property is off of Fisher Court via an existing approach. It is located within the Trailwood Village Road District and currently contains a single-family residence with attached garage. This property is served by the Rapid Valley Sanitary District for onsite wastewater disposal and treatment. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. No significant concerns came back on this. The Trailwood Village subdivision was originally rezoned to a planned unit development in 1976. There have been several reviews and amendments conducted since then. The most recent amendment was in 2005. It was approved by the Board of Commissioners, excuse me, on February 14th, 2006, with 15 conditions. One of those conditions does actually state that, condition number nine states that the minimum setbacks for all sub-collector and local streets are 15-foot front yard, 16 feet between buildings as a side yard, and 25-foot rear yard. And prior to this most recent PUD amendment, the meeting minutes dated May 21st, 1990, state that if there is any deviation from these guidelines, the permit must be reviewed and approved by the planning commission, thus giving the planning commission the authority to waive setback requirements of the Trailwood Village PUD. Staff first spoke with the applicant in June of this year regarding the shed and greenhouse that he wants to construct on the property. Staff advised him of the setback requirements, and the applicant stated that due to the location of existing utility lines on the subject property and the size of the lot, he's not able to meet that required setback. So on June 14th, he applied for this special consideration to reduce that rear yard setback to eight feet. There is eight-foot minor drainage and utility easements along the interior of all of these lot lines, so he will be staying outside of that eight-foot easement. On June 30th, staff did perform a site visit and observed several flags in the yard. He did some utility locates and discovered where all of his lines go. And up there, you can see the stakes of where he proposes to put the shed and greenhouse. And also, through staff research, we have found that there have been other similar special considerations to the Trailwood Village PUD that have been approved. There was one in 2006 to reduce the front yard setback to 14 feet from 15 feet. That was approved in 2006. In 2011, there was a special consideration to reduce the front yard setback from 25 feet to three feet in order to construct a shed. That was approved on October 24th, 2011. And in 2014, there was a special consideration to reduce the front yard setback also from 25 feet to 20 feet in order to allow for an existing attached front porch. And that was approved on August 25th, 2014. So staff is recommending approval of the special consideration to the Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development with one condition.
Questions for Cassie from the Planning Commission? Cassie, I guess I have one. Looking at the aerial photograph in our packet, I see what looks like at least five others that probably don't have the 25-foot setback.
Yes.
I doubt, I'm guessing that most of them don't have a PUD variance requested. What's the process for changing PUD to be more global if that's prevailing? Does that need concurrence of the current residents to change a PUD?
Yes, staff has discussed that. There are several structures in Trailwood Village that don't have this special consideration when they're supposed to. A lot of the structures that are too close to the setback, as you can see, like this right here, are sheds that don't require building permits, so we're not aware of them until we see aerial pictures or until they come in and want to do something else. But staff has discussed the need to just update this planned unit development, but we haven't.
I don't have time to get through it. There is precedent for it, definitely.
Sigget does say surrounding zoning north, PUD south, PUD east, PUD and west PUD. Did you know that on your paper?
Well, I'm not sure, yeah, on the ones that you're seeing in the aerial photograph. I guess to me, I'm just looking at, it's a relatively small snapshot, I'm seeing five others, you know.
Oh, there's plenty more. It's one of those things that when it was originally done in '79 and the subsequent amendments, it was a good idea, but the actual practice of the people living there, it's no longer a good idea. So staff is recommending it be changed.
That's my question, it seems to be a desire of the community there, you know, so should we adopt it? And does it need approval of the residents of the community for?
It does, it would. It would be a major amendment. No one from the community has come forward. It's a $400 permit, plus then letters need to be sent out. There's about $7 apiece to every resident in the PUD, a couple hundred homes. So staff may propose to actually have the county do it in the future, but.
No, I'm not objecting to the current request, but it just seems like it's happening.
Yeah, staff noticed it too.
So how, how about the drainage with the greenhouse? Is the drainage, because those houses are so close together in a cul-de-sac, is the drainage in that area because of Hawthorne? Hearing a lot of things about Hawthorne, and is that gonna add to the issues there? Is there any issues in that area for drainage right now? Because if you add a greenhouse, and you have a yard.
Turn it over to our drainage person.
And you don't have culverts, sidewalks, drainage areas besides culverts.
In that area, we haven't had complaints that I'm aware of. That lot is relatively flat, to my understanding. And I did look on the aerial when this request was put forward. And that area is pretty large where it drains to. So I don't foresee any issues, and typically, we wouldn't address them until there was actually a complaint made.
Ms. Brittany, so there wasn't any complaints in that area for drainage or people draining onto their lot and flooding them out or anything like that? It's all going, is the back part, is that Hawthorne? What is the?
I think that's part of the County Heights drainage.
Okay. So they don't. I just thought in cul-de-sac, that close, and then you're adding more to the drainage issue. But if there's no complaints, then that should tell you that's doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Other questions for staff? If not indicated, the applicant's here, you wish to speak? Do you have anything to add? If you do, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, so.
Thanks. I'm Mark Herrick. And just to add to the greenhouse, it's small. It's a six-by-eight foot, so it's very small and for spices. So it's not gonna have like constant water flowing or, you know, year-round kind of thing, probably. So it's very, very small. And we've had no issues with any kind of drainage problems. It seems to be set up very nicely there. Just the setback is kind of a hindrance.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Herrick?
I have one. Where are the utilities within the lot?
The red flags, that, it's kind of hard to see, but utilities cut right across the middle of the lot. And the 25-foot mark is actually about where that flag is, the red flag out in the middle. So it's just kind of odd the way that it's set up. It didn't come off the transformer. And up the side, it actually went clear along the back fence. Comes up about 20 feet into the neighbor's property, tees off, and then shoots straight across my property from the right side, right there where she's marking. And then it goes straight into the house. So I tried about a dozen different locations on a shed that's 10 by 16. Nowhere. That's the, oddly enough, that's the first spot that we had picked and hoped that that would work.
And does your lot drain to the County Heights drainage ditch?
Yes.
So it drains to the rear of the lot, and then what would that be, southwest?
To the corner, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for the applicant? Anyone else wishing to speak to the matter? If not, staff's recommendation is to approve a special consideration for Trailwood Village Planned Unit Development PU 16-04 with one condition. Entertain a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item 14.
Actually, just a real quick announcement mainly for the newer commissioners. You're gonna have a layout plat before you coming up now, and then a minor plat coming up before you after that. There's different processes within the department of how to replat your property, whether subdividing or consolidating. A layout plat is essentially an applicant coming to us and saying, here's what I want to do. And we tell them, if you want to do that, here's everything that you're gonna need to do to get that done. They still have to come back again and either do a preliminary plat or a minor plat through our office. So this is just the first of a multi-step process for plating the property, okay?
Item 14.
Kelsey Roush, item 14 is a layout plat PL 1609 and subdivision regulations variance SV 1601 to create lots 1A and 1B of T&amp;J Price subdivision and to waive plating requirements, or three plating requirements. This lot has been before you before for rezon and comp plan amendment. First of all, they're trying to plat this lot into two lots. There's a natural rock, like escarpment, that cuts the property in half. The upper, the existing house residence and a couple of sheds and stuff are on the lower portion of the lot. And the second, proposed lot 1B is up higher, and there was actually previously a single-wide mobile home on the property. It had a conditional use permit at the time. There is an existing onsite wastewater treatment system up there as well. The owners would like to plat the lot in two and sell the upper, eventually sell the upper lot. There's actually currently three existing approaches, as noted on the, on the site plan that was provided by Fisk Land Surveying. One, the first approach, the north approach, gives access to the, what would be lot 1A. And the second approach would give access to lot 1B. The third approach doesn't appear to be on a lot, according to the aerial maps, but the surveyor did note that it is located partially within a section line right-of-way. That third approach gives access to a completely separate lot. Lot 1 revised of Engberg subdivision. The only, there's never been any approvals for any of these approaches, but they've been existing as long as we can see. The highway department did not have any problems with any of the approaches. Let's see. Staff, if this is approved, staff would like to add a condition for that third approach, which would be the second approach on lot 1B stating that on the plat, it's recognized as an easement for that other lot. There are three small sheds on the property that are too small to have, to need a building permit. They all meet the setbacks as far as we can tell, and they've all been there for multiple years, several years. There is also what used to be an outhouse on the property is now being used as a shed. You have any questions?
Questions for Kelsey?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sig. You have a conditional use on the property for firearms, manufacturing, hard-cast lead bullets? Is this gonna expand the building? Are they gonna add to the manufacturing or anything on these?
No, that conditional use permit has been revoked. It's been, is ended multiple years ago. I forgot to add that in there, I couldn't find the date.
Okay.
I know it's been, it's not active anymore.
So there's not a home business in here anymore? Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Kelsey? I have, and I guess maybe this is more of a question for Janelle. The 17-foot road easement, if the planning gets, or if the waiver is approved for not having to dedicate right-of-way, does that easement stay, or is that being vacated? Or, I see Janelle stepping up. Janelle, maybe you can answer that better.
My name is Janelle Fink, I'm with Fisk Land Surveying, and we're agents for the prices. Apologize, I'm coming off of a sinus infection this morning, so I'm kind of squeaky today. The 17-foot road easement was actually created about 15 years ago when this lot was originally platted. And because of the proximity of the structure to the existing right-of-way, the county accepted a 17-foot road easement in lieu of dedication of the right-of-way. So there's no setback requirement from the easement itself. And so that maintained a more appropriate separation. With this plat, the 17-foot easement would remain in place. So if at some point in the future, the county should ever desire and need to expand the road, the easement exists.
Thank you. Address my concern, so. Other questions for Kelsey?
Kelsey, you indicated there's a third approach. And what was your condition that you were gonna add for that?
We just wanted to add a condition stating on the plat that that third approach is recognized as an easement for lot 1 revised of Engberg subdivision, which is just to the south.
Is that the gravel driveway that goes down the section line?
Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
So where does that, where does that gravel driveway go?
It goes to this lot right here.
And I could add, that's a section line, and so there's a section line right-of-way in existence there. It's been vacated further to the north. It's been vacated further to the south, but this little piece remains. There is a small piece of Forest Service land directly to the east of this. And according to state statutes, you cannot vacate section line right-of-way that abuts public lands, so this little remainder exists. So there's actually easement or right-of-way that allows for that driveway to serve the property to the south.
Any other questions? Somebody want to deal first with waivers or variances? Correct?
Subbricks.
Pardon me? Staff is, the applicants are requesting subdivision variance SV 16-01. There are three conditions there for the circulation tests, engineered road plans, and the addition of right-of-way for Old Hill City Road. We'll deal with that first, and then go to the layout plat. Staff's recommending approval of the variances. Entertain a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variances SV 1601.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Layout plat approval? Staff recommends approval of layout plat PL 16-09 with eight conditions. Entertain a motion to that effect?
I make a motion, we accept the planning staff's recommendation approved for approval with eight conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Take us to item 15.
Item 15 is minor plat 1612 and subdivision regulation variance 1603 to combine four lots to create lot 8 revised in block four of Silver City addition. I'm just getting it all up and running here for a quick. The applicants and owners are Darlene Hutchinson. The other owners involved are Don and Susan Hicks. And the surveyor agent is Fisk Land Surveying, and there's a representative from that agency in the office, in the room today. Essentially, the applicant is requesting to consolidate two developmental lots, well, essentially four developmental lots into one, whereby decreasing density and to vary some of the subdivision regulation requirements. This was before you as a layout plat recently, but for the new commissioners, I'll go through a little bit more detail than we normally would. The existing conditions for lot 5 and 6. Existing conditions for lot 5 and 6 is .12 acres. It's currently zoned suburban residential. Future land use is suburban residential. There's no flood hazard on the subject property. The approach is off of St. Joseph Street, and there's no structures on the parcel. So that's gonna be the little triangle, the little rectangle parcel to the right. In 2013, a case was open against the landowner for having an outhouse on the property. That case has since been closed. On lots 7 and 8, the larger rectangle is .29 acres, currently zoned suburban residential. Future land use is also suburban residential. There's no flood hazard on the property. It contains a cabin, which was built in 1977. The cabin has had additions through building permits in 2005 and in 2016. There's an operating permit on-site since 2011. There's also an approximately eight-foot and 12-foot shed that was on the property. And there were some violations on the property that were identified during the layout plat. The applicant had. The applicant has since brought the entire property into compliance with either moving structures or getting the required building permits for additions onto the existing structures. If this was approved, uh, this, again, it goes up before the board, but lots five through eight will be consolidated into lot eight revised. It will be approximately point four zero acres. And again, density will be decreasing within the, within the subdivision. The subdivision regulation variances, they're asking to have waived or submittal of engineered and road construction plans and improvements for Saint Joe Street, and also submittal of topography at five foot contour intervals. The subdivision regulation variance and the minor plat were routed through the inner department review and no items of significance, uh, came up. The layout plat, uh, was approved by the Board of Commissioners on May thirty first, two thousand and sixteen. We're on page five of seven now in section eight with twelve conditions. And there's a list of all the, um, things that the applicant and the agent have done with, in regards to those conditions since that time. Again, the applicant is decreasing density within the subdivision. Uh, the landowner and the applicants have brought the subject property into compliance. And the applicant, for note, uh, has also applied for a setback variance, which is setback variance sixteen oh eight, which will be heard by the Board of Adjustments soon to allow for a new carport to be put onto the property. The staff is looking for two motions. The first, that staff recommends approval of the following of subdivision regulation variance sixteen oh three with the following conditions. That's submittal and engineered road construction plans and improvements for Saint Joe Street and submittal and topography of five foot contour intervals.
Questions for PJ?
Why is the, why are the four lots being combined?
From our understanding is so that they can have more parking. They're very small lots down there.
Sure.
You know more, Janelle?
Yes. The large rectangle is owned by the Hutchensons.
Just for the record and tape you on a depth.
I'm sorry, start over again. Janelle with Fisk Land Surveying again on behalf of the Hutchensons. Darlene Hutchinson and her husband own the large rectangle. The small rectangle is owned by her daughter, Susan Hicks, and son-in-law, and they're consolidating their interests. And so they, they will be co-owners of this lot probably for, um, inheritance issues and things like that. And it does allow them a little more flexibility for, for parking or other uses.
Other questions for PJ or Janelle? Staff is recommending approval, we'll start with the subdivision, subdivision regulation variance first. Uh, staff is recommending approval for, uh, SV sixteen dash oh three to waive, uh, engineered road plans. And two, it's a submittal of topography at five foot contour intervals. Are you wishing to speak on this motion?
Can you pull something up? I want to show it.
That one's not in there. They have it in their packet.
I'm Joyce Shagru and landowner in Silver City. And all except the new commissioners, some of you know me quite well. If, um, if you will look at this page in your packet, I'll show you. I'm speaking for the Shagru family today, okay? On this, on this drawing, uh, this is Dar Hutchinson's property. This is the, the four lots that she wants to combine. The Shagru family, my brother-in-law owns three lots here. I own, I own a lot on the corner with my sons and my son.
Could you, could you use the numbers so we can reference it?
Okay, number of what, the lot numbers?
Yes, yeah.
Please.
Okay. Dar's is, is lot B revised on that map. My brother-in-law owns four, three, and two adjacent to it. I own one on the corner. If you look across Saint Joe Street, you'll see track D and track C. My son and his family own that, that property. So we are adjacent to Dar's property and across the street. And, uh, so that's why I'm speaking today. We actually don't have any problem. As a matter of fact, we think it's good to combine those four lots. And don't have any problem with that. Actually don't have any problem with anything, but we're looking to the future. And my brother-in-law's cabin, which is on lot four, probably doesn't even go to lot five. These are old mining lots, twenty-five by a hundred foot. Uh, Dar has two mining lots now that are a hundred by two hundred, okay? So her lot looks like that L or whatever you want to call it. His cabin probably has a setback. He's right on the corner of lot four, right against the right of way, probably not a foot. It's been there ninety years, okay? So it's legal non-conforming. It sits right on the right of way. If you drive Saint Joe, it looks like he has a big front yard that's all right of way. And the Saint Joe Street, I don't know how they planted this or when, but this is a mining community and the lots were planted. The street itself doesn't go down the middle of the right of way. It's way to the south side of the right of way. Uh, I think it is within the right of way, but I'm not even sure of that. It may be on Jeff and Jody's, some of it on Jeff and Jody's property. So our concerns are for the future. There's a lot of variances required here. That's typical in Silver City because it's such an old community. The lots are so strange and things were built in the middle of the, you know, in the middle of the right of way. It's, it's really difficult, uh, to build there. So variances are required. But it's like, to me, it's like putting a puzzle together. You've got all these pieces that have to fit, and we sort of do it incrementally and, um, don't always know what the big picture is. So it's like blindly putting a puzzle together. I talked to Dar the other night and she told me the use of this is for parking. I can see why she's doing it. Uh, you know, she was in the right of way before with her, with her carport. There was a cabin on lot, oh, it maybe crossed those two on the shorter one there. It maybe crossed, uh, the, the lot lines, and they took that down. It was derelict. They took that down and that's where they put the shed. And then she's going to put the carport in front of that, and that's why she's asking for the variance, uh, down to ten feet. And, and basically there's no problem because my brother-in-law's cabin's right on the corner. She's still behind him. With a setback of eight feet on the side, you know, they could park cars or put the car, carport that close. I doubt that they'll do that because she's actually got a hundred feet across there. But for the future, when Dar is gone, I think there's a different plan, okay? And so, um, it won't be for parking necessarily. That's my understanding, hearing two sides. Uh, but as long as Dar is here, it will be for parking. But I want to, you to be aware that there may be a different plan in the future, and I actually think it will work out okay. I am concerned about the variances on Saint Joe. And I'm almost, I'm assuming that you will, they will allow those variances. There's no curb and gutter in Silver City. Uh, you know, it's strange that the actual driving street, and it's been graded, so at one point it was a street. It's more than a trail, is off to the side of the right of way. There's no road district there. There is no governmental entity in Silver City, nothing. They're not a, they're not incorporated, they're not a township, they're nothing, okay? They're just a group of people who live in this village, old mining village. It's not county. The county, uh, the county has Main Street. They may have Dugan that goes up the side, but they, I know they don't have Saint Joe. So if the variances aren't allowed, my question is who's going to pay for the upgrade of Saint Joe Street? Because the Shagrus have a whole lot of property along Saint Joe Street. So I'm concerned about that. Now traditionally, what I've seen you do is you allow those variances because there's no curb and gutter in Silver City. You know, if you do a chunk of Saint Joe, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't fit, it doesn't work. It's, it's just sort of a mess when you, when you try and upgrade one street in a little village that, you know, is an upgrade. You can't hardly tell it was ever graded. So I am concerned about those variances. If you turn, if they turn that variance down, then we will have a grave concern because we don't have any idea who's going to have to pay for upgrading Saint Joe. So, um, it's a dead end street, nobody at the end of it. There's no, you can't, you know, even loop around at the end. You can back in and out of driveways. So anyway, that's why I'm here today is because it's our property, which is unusual for me, the reason for me to be here. But we are close and Dar is going to use it for, for parking. I don't have any, I don't, uh, think that she has any other use for it at this time. Uh, but we certainly will watch it because it's, it's so close to it.
So Joyce, let me get this straight. You're speaking in favor of the variances?
I'm, I'm just, I'm neutral. It's okay. I, I am in favor of, uh, combining the four lots into one.
And, and the, and allowing the variances as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if the variances aren't allowed, it's very difficult. My son, when he combined tracts and lots across the street, he's actually got two, combined it, made it into two lots because there were two residences. And so, you know, you can only put one, one resident on one lot, one residence on one lot. So he, he worked it out, so he's got two lots. It's very difficult because of the way it was put together to begin with. The alley went right through the middle of the place where he tore down an old house and put a new one up. The alley went right through the middle of it and they never vacated it because, you know, you don't have to pay taxes on it until it's vacated. He vacated that, so he didn't have an alley going through his house and, you know. So it's really a strange, you know, a strange community because it's an old mining community from the eighteen seventies. So you have to cope with it. And I can tell you very frankly, the reason that we're in favor of combining the lots is because you can only have one residence on one lot. And people, if you've been to Silver City, they are tight together. These are twenty-five foot lots. The one I own on the corner, you know, I can't imagine how you could ever build on twenty-five feet. It's deep, a hundred feet, but it's only twenty-five feet wide. And so by combining these, and she's got, it's, this is L shape, you know, two hundred feet and then a hundred feet, but a hundred feet wide, one residence, that's good.
So Chairman, Chairman, can I ask PJ a question? So who maintains Saint Joseph Street? Does everybody, like in, in Silver City, who puts the gravel down or, or maintains the streets? If it's, she said it's not county?
Not my understanding. Who have you seen down there?
Oh, they'd get out their Skidster, their four-wheeler with their blade on it. And there's no, past, past the corner in the wintertime, there is no one on that street. Uh, maybe somebody will come and spend Christmas. They're all part-timers. My, my son and his family are full-timers on that corner, but usually you don't even have to clear it.
So who maintains it, Ms. Joyce? So who puts the gravel down? Everybody just gets together and?
Yeah, and I don't recall, and we've been there about fifty years. I don't recall graveling that street. I actually don't. You know, some of them are like a trail. Saint Joe doesn't go straight through, like you can't drive. If you're, if you're on Saint Joe, you can't drive here. You're going to drive right into the Catholic Diocese priest's retreat. Jog up like this and it looks like an alley.
There's, there's no homeowners association or anything out there to gravel the streets?
No road district, yeah.
So it's hard, you know, to understand that what do we do because, to conform with the county ordinances when it's a hundred and fifty years old, you know? You just, it's hard. Because, you know, if you jog up and go down Saint Joe, it looks like an alley. There's addresses on it, but it isn't straight. It's a trail. This one has been graded sometime and prior to us being there, it's been graded. And the drainage, you know, doesn't work real good now, but it, it is, it has been.
I would maybe note for Rich and Travis that typically when we have lot consolidations, we have waived the road improvements. Now, if they're creating new lots, it's a question, and that's actually an issue that we're kind of struggling with is, you know, when do you, what triggers the road improvements? And that's probably a discussion we need to have as we kind of go through a comp plan revisions and all that because I think we do need a bit better understanding of what triggers road improvements. You know, typically, again, on consolidations, we haven't required it.
And, and you know, with my brother-in-law's, right on that corner, it's within the lot lines, and it was a mining lot. And the original foundation for the little mining cabin is still there, right on that corner. I'd bet his propane tank may be half of it on the side, maybe on Dar's.
Do we have other questions for Joyce?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff's, uh, recommendation is, we'll start with the variance. Uh, staff's recommendation is, uh, for subdivision variance sixteen dash oh three for waiving the submittal of engineered road plans and the submittal of topography at five foot contour intervals. Entertain a motion to, for acceptance for staff's recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, move on to the minor plat. Minor plat, uh, PL sixteen dash twelve. Staff is recommending approval with seven conditions. Entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval of layout plat sixteen dash twelve. Any further discussion?
The carport has been removed from the right of way?
Correct. They sold it and it has been removed.
And there's no plans to put one or anything, for that matter, back in the right of way?
Uh, not in the right of way.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. On item sixteen.
Item sixteen is plan unit development sixteen oh three for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto. To rezon twelve point nine one acres from general agriculture to plan unit development to allow for a specialty resort development to include uses such as vacation home rentals, weddings, receptions, picnics, family reunions, satellite church for up to a hundred and, a hundred and fifty people, which is, that's actually been pulled. Uh, parties, single-family residents, bed and breakfasts, storage gift shops, spas, cabanas, bistros, detached accessory structures with living quarters and duplexes. That's what they originally have asked for. It's kind of morphed since the original application. Uh, essentially what staff is asking for is, uh, we recommend that plan development sixteen oh three be continued to allow the applicant's time to work with staff to resolve, uh, issues. There were two complaints that were, one complaint with two items filed back on June twentieth, uh, which necessitated a continuance of this PUD. Uh, staff, uh, from the highway department and the planning department went out onsite and met the, the landowners and discussed some options. They appear to be in violation of ordinance thirty-three, and so therefore staff is recommending continuation until the issues are resolved.
Uh, I noticed that you didn't recommend a date.
That is correct.
Okay, that's, was intentional.
We've already, it was intentional.
Okay. Question, we'll start off with questions for PJ. Any questions for him regarding the proposed continuance? I do see that, uh, the Evangelistos are here and other members of the public that have been here typically for this issue. Do you wish to speak on this? Again, the proposed is to continue this till issues are resolved and then be brought back up in front of the planning commission.
Hi, Nancy Evangelisto. We are in favor of continuing at this time. Brittany, uh, did come out and talk about the, um, proposed violation. Um, one of the things we wanted to point out is this water drainage issue has been going on since nineteen sixty-one when the plat was, um, put into place and the original culverts were put into place. Last year, as everybody knows, there was a lot of flash flooding and, um, water issues, and we are at the bottom of a large hill. Uh, the road district, these are actually road district issues that need to be looking at this water. One of the, um, issues on the water, um, has been addressed with Brittany as far as putting in the quarry spalls to slow down the flow of the water. And as soon as the road district has funds, they will be doing that. Funds have been, we have up to two years is what we were told to do that. The tight lining of the drainage, um, from the downspouts on our property, that was, um, going to be addressed as far as moving it back, uh, so it'll drain right on. We actually are trying to control the erosion that's happening from drainage of any property. We actually are trying to control the erosion that's happening from drainage of any property. Whereas typically, if you go along Taylor Ranch Road, everybody's just dumping it straight onto the county road. And we can show pictures where every property along there is draining off directly onto the road, causing erosion onto Taylor Ranch Road. So.
Questions for Nancy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Staff's recommendation is for a continuance of PU sixteen dash oh three.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion to continue?
Yes, we would.
I'll so move then.
Take it.
Motion and second for continuing this item. Any further comments? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to item seventeen, County Board Report.
Item seventeen, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission meeting. Just kind of a little heads up, the items that are below that are on your agenda were appealed and will be heard at the July nineteenth, two thousand sixteen Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any questions about any of those?
I guess I have a question on the conditional use permit. Was the appeal specific to the, you know, seemed to be one of the issues is the number of ATVs? Is that, was it specific on the appeal on that item?
Cassie Bolston, Assistant Director. We actually received four appeal letters on that one. All of them did kind of have the common theme of wanting to limit the number of ATVs.
Other items that were identified in the appeal or more just the ATVs?
There were other issues that were identified relevant to the ATV situation in Rochford in general. But specific to the conditional use permit, they centered around the ATVs. There was really no mention of the retail store or the bicycle rentals. It was more centered around the ATVs and either limiting the number or just doing away with them completely.
Thanks. Anyone else have?
What specifically was the one on the VHR that we passed?
Kelsey's here for that one.
Kelsey Roche, Planning Commission, or Planning Department. Sorry. I believe the issue is the, the neighbors are all concerned about the well. And they just, they don't believe that that's the right use for that neighborhood. As they think, they think it's a commercial use when really it's.
The homeowners association is the ones appealing the decision.
Yes, all the, most of the neighbors, yeah.
A little less. Sorry. Water isn't commercial, I'll just say it isn't commercial less than having a residence there every day.
That was one of the comments made during the meeting.
Yeah, most of the time it is.
Yeah. Because who knows if they're going to have people staying there every day, you know?
I know in the city it is, so I don't know, based on septic, but a lot of times water usage and stuff, so.
Other questions regarding these three items? I guess I do have a question. I don't know if it fits in here for a County Board Report or items from staff. The other vacation home rental on resolution on how, what motion we should have made or resolving that issue, is that, I don't know if that's appropriate now with the County Board Report or is that more items from staff?
We, I was kind of reporting what happened during the meeting. If you want an explanation of kind of the ins and outs of it, we could do it during the staff time.
Okay. Items from the public. Anyone from the public that is here that wishes to speak any further on public items? Hearing none, I'll move on to item nineteen then. Items from staff, building report.
Sure. Item nineteen, for the new commissioners, once a month, you'll get the previous month's kind of a summary of the building permits that we take in. You'll have the information sheet on the front, which shows you the valuation and also the percentage changes over this time last year. And then also a detailed list from our track-it system of what the permits actually were for and who applied for them. What you normally won't get is that additional sheet that I included. That's the colored one, the construction classification. That's what staff use just for consistency standards, to be able to know when somebody comes in and applies for a building permit, where we're going to categorize and classify that. So that's for kind of your information.
That was just emailed out, not?
That one was emailed out, yes. Yep. So just real brief, our single-family homes are down forty-two percent over this time last year. We have thirty this year, had about fifty-two as of this time last year. Mobile homes, single and double wides are up fifty-eight percent. And another item to note, our signs are down fifty-five percent. Most of those actually come in as temporary signs for, for the July, but we didn't have that many come in this year. So other than that, we're down overall seventeen percent on our building permits from this time last year.
Questions for PJ regarding the building permit report? I guess PJ, thank you for sending this classification. Maybe you've distributed it before, I don't remember, but I think it's helpful, especially with new members coming on, but even, even for me.
It actually originated with the Census Bureau. And it was their numbers and their, their types of construction, I guess. They've since stopped using this and only use one oh one, which is for our single-family residents. They really don't care about the rest anymore. And this is through a phone conversation I had with them. But for our purposes, we're maintaining the use of these and we're slowly adding in the different, you know, the descriptive, descriptive areas when something comes up and we try to find the best place for it to fit. Like pergolas, we didn't have pergolas on there before. And when they started coming in, we had to find a place that was most appropriate for them. But we're pretty much the only ones that use these. These numbers are ours, they can change if you find a better system. We're all ears. But this is just what we use.
I appreciate the clarification of that.
You're welcome.
Then I guess, do you want to address it as part of staff? I guess.
Yeah, sure.
Cassie, you're an expert on that one?
Yes. The Board of Commissioners ultimately decided to, they were given the option to, what was the wording? Basically rescind their previous motion that they made upon the first appeal. And they were given the option to rescind that motion and then choose to deny the conditional use permit based on Planning Commission's decision. Or they were also given the option to amend their previous approval and amend the condition that brought it back to the Planning Commission in the first place. They voted on a four-to-one vote, if I recall correctly, to amend their previous approval and amend condition number seventeen to make it a more standard condition, which now says that the conditional use permit will get reviewed in one year on a complaint basis or as deemed necessary by the Planning Commission or the Board.
Okay. Thank you. So it's not coming back to us again or we don't have to take further action on that then?
No, not for a year until it comes into its normal review.
Thank you. Items for membership. Anyone have anything for the good?
Chair, I have something to ask. Whatever happened to the height exception on that roller coaster? Is he, I'm sorry, I didn't check and see if he's mobile or?
Oh, he's been constructing for some time. The new, the new plans came in and he was under the requirement for the height for Highway Service District. And there's no reason not to approve the building permit. He got it a few weeks ago.
For Rich and Travis, it's Rashmore Cave is where this?
The mountain coaster.
Right.
Yep.
They haven't had any complaints on, is it running?
I think they're still under construction because we understand there's some complaints from people that show up there because there's advertising pretty much all over this side of the state for it. And this, last time I heard, it's not finished yet.
Well, you advertised that it was opening at a certain day.
April.
But my issue was, was there any complaints once it was open for noise and disturbance in that canyon, so?
No, we haven't received any complaints about its operation so far this year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other items for membership? Hearing none, entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Andy.